Ready? Okay. I would like to call to order the Manona City Council Committee of the Whole review of the 2021 operating budget for Tuesday, October 27, 2020. Will the clerk please call the role?
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Goleforth.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Corr.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
Here.
Alder Groupie.
Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. All right. First up in the review is a budget overview, which Mark primarily will be doing. He'll be going over the highlights. And because you all know, we requested that departments submit budgets with a 0% increase. And with very few exceptions, that is what happened, which I really appreciate everyone doing that because I know it wasn't easy. Mark, are you ready to? Did everyone get the handout that Mark emailed late this afternoon?
Mark, you're now host, so you can share your screen.
That's what he'll be going through.
Thanks. Just to kind of start, when we talk about the 0% budget, it's kind of how the process went. There was the initial directions. There was four types of budget we asked for, 1%, 0%, negative 1, negative 2. Just because this year, there was a lot of unknowns. We wanted to get all the department heads. You know, what would happen if you had these situations and we knew money came in, revenues came in better or worse, we could adjust it from there. So it came down to, when we went through it, what ended up in the budget is the 0% budget we took out of all those four budgets. That was our starting point. When we talk about 0% budget too, there's a little confusion on this with some people. 0% budget, where the directions were, depending what type of fund you had, for example, police department, finance, other general funds, there's no offsetting revenues. So their expenditures was 0%. And then you got into like the library, have their own separate funds, like the library, community center, pool, senior center. Their 0% was the actual property tax levy. So if you look at these, you might see, well, why is it the expenditures for pool at 0%? It could be positive, negative, and offhand. It's because we looked at the property tax numbers. So if they had revenues offset their increases in expenditures, we were okay with that. Focus on those was the 0% as far as the property taxes. So just kind of, you know, when you're looking through there, you're asking, why is the expenditures higher in some of these or not? It's based on how your funding was. So I'm just going to start with the presentation. Just so you know, before we get started too, this is probably the most difficult year we've had probably doing a budget. So many losses, we'll talk about that in the revenue sections. We had to make it a lot of tough, it was pretty tough to get to just a balanced budget. So COVID really didn't act on the city this year because COVID-19 didn't happen, we probably could be adding staff. I mean, that's how much infected us with that. So I'm just going to start with the presentation here. So hopefully I can see the screen.
I'm not seeing it.
You're not able to see it?
No. That's good.
This is kind of a budget summary, it's also on page three. So total property tax levy increase, $315,032 for a 3.9% increase. On page three again, the total property tax levy is $8,382.52, $524. So with the levy limit, there's two things. There is an operating portion, and then there is a debt service portion. The debt service is exempt from your operating levy limits. We were allowed to increase our levy limit by 209,761. It did come under that number. Came in at 191,131 for $18,640 under the levy limit as far as the non-debt service. That's right now, as we'll look at the expenditures, it's kind of a gapping we have right now because we're still in negotiations with the police and fire unions. Depending on how that comes out, we probably have to use some of that levy, we'll probably use that levy limit. Hopefully we'll have an agreement signed until we know before we, tax time comes for our next meeting. I know we're pretty close on both of them. So hopefully we'll have that here within the next week or two. But the debt service levy increase, 168,911. So that total between the non-operating, the non-debt service and the non-debt service equals 315,320. So the full tax rate actually decreased from 6.53 now to 6.43. So this next one too, the average property tax on an average assessed house is 361,800 compared to last year, 340,600. Your taxes will increase $104.56 on average. Just wanted people to know this one because this gets confusing when your tax bills come out. You really need to know what your assessment is last year to this year and kind of compare that increase. There's a lot of people actually in the city, just running a sample, whose assessments didn't change at all. And so their taxes are going to be a little bit lower than somebody who's increased a little bit higher as far as the assessment. But in average, it's about $104. So that's where that is. Total expenditures increased only 1.75 in 2020, or 239,000. And the big one here is revenues actually decreased by a little over $500,000, almost 9% from last year. So expenditures for the 2021 budget, there is really very few changes. We maintained the current service with that 0% budget. Currently, right now, the non-reps in the budget is a 0% wage increase. Like I said, the police and fire contracts are currently being negotiated. Hopefully we'll have that, I think we'll have an agreement at least before the second meeting in November. So we'll probably have to have a budget amendment, depending what comes out of that. WRS rates stayed the same, Wisconsin retirement stayed the same, health insurance only went up about 3.8. One change, the community center would not be doing rentals. So we will get to the, tomorrow, the community center, there will be no revenue coming in for that. Because of that, there is one reduced staff in the community center. It's the only staff reduction in this entire budget that's related to that change in the community center. And I know the rental thing's been talked about for years, so it's not just because of this year, but I know that's been changed, been talked about. So debt service payments did increase by 250,000 with the expenditures. With everything where we're at still, our designated fund balance is 25% over general fund operating budget. Our policy is 15 to 20. If you look on page, page one, there's a breakout of it. So if you're kind of looking at that, where that comes from, it's on page one. Here's the biggie, the revenues, this is where we got hit pretty hard. We did get good numbers for transportation aid, went up about 24,000. The more you spend on public works, construction projects, the more your expenses go up, so the more money you get back for transportation aid. It's a six-year rolling average. We were down the last couple of years. But now we spent on bridge road, riverfront, infrastructure, McKenna, so that number should be increasing in the future. Next, there's a new state aid we got started in 2019, this personal property revenue, property tax revenue. And that decreased by 14,000. So we're basically down to like peanuts now. So that was a hit, was not expected. We did increase billing permits by 31,000. Court fines decreased by 17,000. Here's the big one, interest income decreased by 165,000. When we get into the revenues, you'll see what we, you know, last year, we're over 450,000 received in revenue, it's just an interest income. And now we're down to probably about 135,000. So that was a big hit with that room tax. So there is a, room tax is a new state law, we had to, there's a base year, each year decreases to get your base year. Now we're at our base year, and that's about 170,000, so it's like a $33,000 decrease from the year before. Community center rental decreased by 28,500. For some reason, must have saved it before I added Walmart in there. Walmart did decrease, decreased by 50,000. That was a, excuse me, a 15-year agreement we had with them. 40,000 went to the general fund, 10,000 went to the transit fund. That is, contract is up, so that was, that all hit this year in 2021, so that was untimely for us. We are using fund balance, 250,000 is being transferred over to the general fund to the debt service levy to reduce that. And when we talk about the transit budget, we did use almost 13,000 in there to balance that. Got a couple graphs on here. Just, just going to show where we were at, where we're spending on. So these are just expenditures. So if you can see, general government, admin, building, police, fire EMS, public works, and so on and so on. MSD, senior center, I abbreviate, so they show up. As you can see, majority is spent on police, fire EMS are the two largest expenditures. That could be park wreck and community center, and then library, public works. We'll get to the park and recs one. They have a lot of offsetting revenues, so they do cover a lot of their expenses with other revenues. So I just kind of want to show you that. General government is like your, is your legal, your IT, your insurance. A lot of those are included in there. Here's the revenue, non, here's your revenues by each department. That's subject to something. So like, you're in the government, revenues not included in here, interest income's not included in here. It's just what's attached to something. Like say for police, you'd have your court fines are included in there, your school officer is included in that revenue amount. Fire EMS, 99% of that's your ambulance fees. And as you can see, the largest one is revenues we receive from park wreck and the community center, the pool wreck and the community center. And that's where a lot of that revenue is, we are, the non-property taxes going. So this next one page is, I don't know if you're following this, me and my head, I was doing it. This is net of your revenues, what it looks like. So your police still, net of the revenues is still your highest. Public works and EMS are fairly level. And if you kind of look at the, you know, public pool wreck and community center, as you can see before, they were higher. Now they're actually below the library, public works, fire EMS, and police, and general government. So I know we pick on Jake a lot, just kind of highlight that, but he does have a lot of non, he has a lot of revenues that are offsetting his expenses. This is an estimated personally, property tax split. I don't have the final numbers yet from the school district or ours at the county, but just kind of based on some estimates. You know, school districts, 56%, or 27%, almost 28, counties almost 13, or for Madison College. That'll be updated, and Brian sent out a letter, kind of a dollar bill to split it out, we'll do the same thing for this year. Challenges are ahead, COVID-19 is, the record habit on us, you know, interest income, court fines are down, a lot of things. Room tax, that could be down, you know. If you don't have room tax, football season's canceled again next year. As far as fans, that makes a big difference. A lot of stuff at the Lion Center makes a big difference as that's canceled. If you have those things, you know, the room tax should be okay, but if we don't, that's going to be one of those numbers we have to watch again. You know, for future, net new construction is a big number too. I didn't mention our net new construction, it's about 1.6%. That's what the full value of phase one and two, riverfront, going in. For next year, you know, phase three, as of January 1st, I'm expecting that to be a low number. So I expect our net new construction to be a pretty low number next year. I'm sure it's, I assume it's going to be under 1%, I would imagine. The utilities, there was, file the water rate case, actually got some notice from the PSC. They're almost finalized with that, so they'll be coming back to the public works once they get all the information from them. 20% here for sewer, it's actually. It's actually sewer rates, it's supposed to be 7%, that line's supposed to be gone. 7% increase from MSD, so they, right now, they gave us what the average increase is. What MSD does, Mass Metro Search District does is, once their budget is approved, each individual municipality will get their own individual increase. Last year was double digits. I believe it's around 15%. So a 7% is their average. We could be a lot higher than that, we could be lower than that. For now, in the budget book, it says 7%. A lot of that is from what we're told, from I and I and some other issues. So we're hoping that's going to be right around 7%. And storm waters increased 7% based on the debt service from the year before is increasing.
Did you say the sewer rate increase should have also said 7%?
Yeah, so the third line is really the sewer one, 7% increase from MSD, so that's, that's a 20%.
All right, thanks.
So if anybody has any questions, we got the department heads here.
I think Nancy has a question. You're on mute, Nancy.
I want to say, I love the graphs. I think they're very helpful, particularly, I mean, it's just, as somebody visually, I think it just makes a lot of sense, a lot more sense to have it in the graph form. Because we can really see, and more importantly, our public, our community can see where we're spending our money. And I would argue certainly in the right places, and also where we are taking in revenues. And I'm, I'm going to assume that we're assuming a normal year, correct?
Most part of the year.
Sort of, yeah.
Didn't we talk about, you know, revenues in park and rec, or when you're talking about, you know, any other operation for that matter? You're assuming that we're going to be running all of our operations the way we did in 2019 as opposed to 2020?
Let's, when Jake's, he's on tomorrow, he, we did look at the effects of COVID-19. So in Jake's budgets, his is adjusted for that. But the other ones have been adjusted down because of the, for the COVID-19 stuff like that. Fines, revenues, interest income, revenues, just kind of based on what we're at right now, what you're expecting in that. But so most of them have been adjusted for that.
Doug, did you have a question?
Yeah. A comment first on that, the community rec services, other revenues are down 188,000. That's on page two. So that, that reflects, you know, not expecting it to be a normal year. Mark, you said we have, we're about 18,000, 18,600, under the levy limit, but you expect that possibly to all be needed for the police and fire contracts?
Potentially, because those items are still in process at the moment.
Okay. So let's assume that that's the case, and we have to use it for that. Then if somebody wanted to do a budget amendment, they either need to find something equal to cut or use fund balance. That's the only two options.
Provided that it's not an ongoing expense. I would recommend again, using fund balance for something that's an ongoing obligation, but if it's a one-time expense, yes.
Well, but we have the option, you know, if we think that's appropriate. I mean, but those are the only two ways you could get the money, would be either to cut something else or use fund balance, so. And how much do we have over, or do we expect to have in the fund balance above the 20% policy?
So about 351,000. So if you kind of look on page one, it kind of shows details that it's around 25, it's 351,000. That's a rolling number, just so you know.
Yeah.
It's based on your, if you add more expenses, that number's going to, it's a math formula, it will change.
Right. One thing we also know is that, for instance, we very well may end up paying CivMec, they're defending us in two lawsuits. And what is the minimum we have to pay for that, Mark? 37.5?
37.5, that's been accounted, but it has been accounted for in the 2000.
That has been accounted in the 2021? Okay.
Yeah.
But there are some other, I don't think, we haven't accounted, for instance, for the police chief search because we weren't planning on hiring a company until we heard fairly recently that the PFC wanted to do that. So there's, there are some things like that, that I don't think that's in the budget, is it, Mark?
There is nothing for the police search, no.
And a few other things like that that we know, so.
Right.
Any other questions? I can't, let me just see if anybody else, okay. You're on mute.
So, Mark, do we think the room tax that is estimated is reasonable?
Well, the room tax number is at the baseline, 170,000. We should, just based on the new Airbnb's that we are, should get 170,000. It's probably going to be more than 150,000, 170,000 we'll probably collect, which is, or max is, we can keep as 170,000. So there could be a $20,000 shortage if it goes the full year next year, no football games, no things at the Lion Energy Center, things like that.
Yeah, it seems to me that's more of a, I mean, I, it's a hopeful amount.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
And, and after we have used the fund balance, how much, what percentage will our fund balance be at?
25% is what's, kind of the budget would be left, 25%.
And our policy is what, 18 to 20?
15 to 20.
15 to 20.
So there's a little bit left with the police search and a couple of unanticipated things, but not much.
If there's another lawsuit or anything like that, that's the news environment, that you hope we want to keep it for something like that.
Well, so far, I mean, I haven't, I mean, I think you guys did a good job of walking the line of, you know, holding, keeping a tight budget. Because we may, if COVID doesn't get any better, we may be in danger in other revenue sources again this year. So, so I think it's sensible to not be too tight, but realize that we may have some additional losses, so.
Agreed.
We're fortunate that our fund balance over and above our minimum was as much as it was, really, because that's really kind of saved us.
It was, I mean, it goes back to, these tiffs do make a big difference when you close them. If you didn't close Tiff 2, and we did, I mean, we had, that was 78,000 was added in there before COVID-19. If we didn't have that.
You're right, yeah.
We'd be in bad shape. I mean, not in bad shape, but we'd definitely be a hurt hit on our fund balance.
But we need to remember, we need to remember that the fund balance we use this year, we won't, we may not have to use next year, and so.
Yep.
We got a levy for it.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I was just looking back at last year's proposed budget. Looks like we weren't planning, we were only planning to spend 196,000 of the fund balance, and we ended up spending 413,000, so about 100, about 200,000 plus difference.
We used 200, I think that was a budget amendment to offset the debt service levy, if I remember right. And we used some for capital too, and some for capital purchases.
Anyone else? Okay, well then, why don't we move down to the first item, which is information technology. Leah, I think that's on page 40 of your book.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Leah.
Okay, the IT budget this year. What I'm presenting to you that you see tonight is actually a 3% decrease in our 2021 budget over 2020. And that is actually accomplished by decreasing the line item for our information tech support. So as you know, we have a consultant firm, Land Tech, that does our IT tech support. In the 2017 and 2018 fiscal years, we were budgeting $60,000 for that support, and we were spending a little over 60,000 most of those years, and previous years to that as well. So we were overspending our budget a little bit. So in 2019, we decided to add some more money to that budget, and I think we overcorrected a little. So I'm estimating at the end of this year, we'll probably be spending about $67,000, $68,000 on that line item for IT tech support. So I think that we would be safe from taking that budget down from 80,000 to 70,000 for 2021. That's still going to give us an average of 15.84 hours of tech support a week. So almost two full days of tech support a week. Right now, we're averaging, with what we're spending right now, about 15 and a quarter hours a week. So I'm feeling comfortable taking that line item down in the budget for next year. The one line item that's always kind of a toss-up every year is our equipment maintenance and repair line item. If you look at our actual numbers from '27 through '29, you can see some years, you know, we budget $10,000 consistently in that line item. Some years we're right up to it, some years we're under. In 2018, we doubled our expenses in that line item, we spent 20,000 budgeting 10. So that's always a toss-up because we just never know what's going to happen, what equipment's going to break, what we're going to need. This year, Mark's to-date numbers as of June 30th in that line item are $798. Since then, we have spent up to that budget. I think we're about $72 under that budget right now. We had a huge lightning strike that took out a big switch at the library, so it cost us almost $5,000 to replace that. And then the other unexpected thing that happened was, because of COVID, we had a vendor that was giving us a free trial of a virus protection software for our email system. So it's an antivirus software where that filters out targeted spear phishing and attacks through our email. And we tried that software, and when we realized how much we were getting in terms of targeted attacks, we decided that we probably wanted to just go ahead and make that purchase. So we made a purchase of that software for $3,000, using that equipment maintenance and repair. Just to give you an idea of that, in the last 30 days, the software has allowed almost 32,000 emails in. It's blocked more than 4,000 emails. In 30 days, we've had three viruses that it took out and five advanced threats. So I think it's I think it's a smart investment for us to be stopping that stuff before it ever gets into our inboxes. Just in the last 24 hours, it's blocked 229 emails. Phishing emails from coming into our server, so. We're going to go ahead and keep that line item at $10,000, though, and just kind of play our cards on that, and hope we have good weather in 2021, I guess. So going forward in this, um, IT budget, what we're going to be looking for, I think in the future. The trend that we're seeing in IT, um, is that we are moving away from software as a product. And moving towards software as a service. So basically, what that means is instead of making outright purchases of software as capital. Capital expenses and then keeping that software for five or six years until it's out of date, and then we purchase new software. The way the IT world is working is that they are selling software as a service, so you basically are renting it. Um, on the cloud and paying monthly or annual user fees for it. So the advantage to that is that, you know, we spend a lot less time, um, in terms of consultant time. Installing software, updating software, and troubleshooting software if it's software as a service. And also, we're, we always have the most up-to-date software. But the disadvantage to that is it's not cheap. But I think that's the trend in IT, that's the way things are going, and I don't see that changing, so. I think as we start to think about our IT budgets for the future, we're probably going to. Be spending more operating-wise on IT to pay for those monthly and annual license fees and less. As capital expenditures and buying software.
Does anyone have any questions? Is that everything, Leah?
That's everything.
Nancy? You're on mute.
I'm, I'm getting there, I was just pressing my finger down, um, I just have two questions, uh. One is, uh, we, we obviously, as you just referenced, we talked about the IT contract.
Right.
Last year, and we did increase that line item, and we also talked at that time about. Whether it made more sense to potentially have our own in-house person as opposed to contract. I'm assuming from this budget that, that you are recommending that we stay the course. With a contract as opposed to trying to get somebody in-house, because the person in-house, as we all know, is you.
And Sarah, and Sarah.
And Sarah, yeah.
Um, I am recommending that we stay the course, I think that we're in a really good place with our consultants, they've been with us for quite a while now. They have gotten us to a really good place where, um, I think we are kind of coasting right now and maintaining as opposed to spending a lot of time catching up. So I, I think it makes sense for us to ride that course for a while.
Okay, and then the second question relates to. The capital expenditures that we made, which is. Is it safe to assume that the maintenance burden? Might be less, of course, assuming we don't have a lightning strike, but. That the maintenance burden, burden might be less because we are investing in additional, uh, hardware. Than laptops and such for newer, newer equipment for staff that we did in the capital budget?
Yeah, I do think that's safe to assume.
Okay.
Anyone else? Nope, I guess not, thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
And next up is Diane, the senior center, and that's page 126.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Diane.
So I'll just do a quick overview of senior center budget in general, bless you. And, um, like, you'll probably hear from others, we, we went ahead and, um, did a 0% increase budget for the senior center. So as a whole, the senior center, um, has three chunks, that's, the senior center, as you know it, our two and a half staff. We work with Newbridge, so about 23% of our budget is a contract with Newbridge for case management. Nutrition site coordination and home chore coordination. And in the third chunk, it's about 3% of our budget goes to R S B P, and that's Retired Senior Volunteer Program. And they collaborate, um, seniors with volunteers to provide transportation to essential medical services. Everything's wonky right now, of course, with Covid, especially with our senior population, so we are assuming, um, 2021 will. Get to a place where we can provide services to our seniors once again. Our biggest asset here at the senior center is our staff. So personnel is a big chunk of that, uh, and what we have to offer. But I always remind people that the Newbridge line item, the contracted senior services. That's a $50,000 line item along with the program development home chore, that's about 6,500. Those are also personnel, we contract for those case managers and those home chore coordinators, even though we don't. Categorize it in our budget, like personnel, you know, if, if we don't offer increases. Those case managers don't get increases in their health insurance and, um, things like that, so. This year, everybody understands, we're going to make do with what we've got and, uh, do our best for our seniors next year. With the budget that, you know, I, I think we're blessed to just have a 0% increase. Not cut staff, not cut programming, you know, just do what we can for next year. Obviously, we're, we've gone much more virtual, um, senior centers have suddenly become very tech savvy, which we were, we did not have that reputation prior to Covid. But we are constantly teaching our seniors how to connect to Zoom. And get connected with one another virtually, especially as our outdoor opportunities are diminishing. We're doing very small groups of 10 or less here, so a lot more staff time, um, and virtually no volunteers. So for those of you who have, um, known the senior center for years, we rely. Very, very heavily on volunteers, and to not have them, um, it's a big difference for staff, constantly answering phones. Addressing the issues of our seniors that our volunteers used to be able to help with. So that's what we look like right now, um, I think just going 0% is going to be fine for us. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone, any questions? Kathy? You're on mute.
I just have a quick comment for Diane, if, if for any of the outside services. You know, they need more money, I, I would certainly feel free to come to the, to the friends and ask them for some. I mean, I don't think they want to do it every year, but I think that this is unusual, and if we need that, I think you, you should feel. Comfortable asking the friends for some money.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thanks a lot, Diane, and thanks for keeping it zero, we appreciate it.
No problem.
Uh, next up is sustainability, Brad, and that is on page 25. It's part of the executive office budget.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so this budget is, uh. A little slimmed down compared to last year, um, but very similar in terms of the. Uh, line items and the, uh, budget, um, numbers next to them, so. $500, um, is listed for outreach and marketing. This is for miscellaneous items that pop up in the middle of the year. Projects that went potentially unplanned, that are initiatives that we want to jump on. Includes opportunities for us to partner with other organizations and covers any associated costs therein. The next is, uh, $500, this includes. Budget funds for myself and the intern position to attend. The annual Sustainable Cities Conference in Dubuque, Iowa, which was canceled this year. So if you see that it wasn't spent this year, that's, that would be why, a couple of items that were on this year's budget were not, or went unspent. Due to Covid and, uh, different types of cancellations. The next line item is $1,000 for the campaign, uh, for campaign and public education funds. Uh, last year, or this year, I should say, the energy campaign spent a good amount of this money on. Things like, um. Seed paper postcards to, um. Build public awareness around the Sustainability Committee Energy Campaign. To promote, uh, public education around the idea of energy efficiency and renewable energy in residential settings. And there's a little bit of leftover money, but likely this will be used up potentially before the end of the year. So the same amount is in this budget as was in last year's budget. And then, uh, $500 for an Earth Day event. That we had to cancel kind of last minute this year, as we were right in the middle of the safer-at-home orders. This includes budget funds to, uh, bring in outside, uh, services. For recycling, very tough to recycle items, household items, things like, uh. E-cycling, uh, typical old electronics. Styrofoam. Other things that you typically, you know, otherwise would just throw away in the landfill. And to cover any other types of associated costs that might go with that, like marketing. You know, signage or, or flyers, or otherwise maybe a small mailing, who knows, you know, those kind of things that would go. Uh, along with that type of, type of, of an event, so the total budget for sustainability initiatives. Is, uh, 2,500, you might note that the intern position is no longer in this. In this budget, uh, last year, or I, I'm sorry, this year, it was. Taken from this budget combined with the city planner's intern. Budget and put into the executive officer's budget, or office budget. For the admin intern, and that intern position we found is a much more efficient position, it allows us to. Pool our resources together and create a position that's, uh. More desired by, uh. Seniors or graduates in the urban planning program or environmental studies programs at UW. The two go hand in hand, and even more so now than ever before, urban planning and environmental, uh. Stewardship or environmental planning, so, uh, for instance, Alyssa's degree is in a very similar field right now. And she's proved to be very invaluable to both Doug and I. So that's where that lies, uh, I believe the amount is 16,400. Which is enough, uh, to cover that position. At, uh, an hourly rate of around $15 for. 20 hours a week for, I, I want to say, the full year. So it's. So it's a, it, it definitely has a good amount of capacity, but Doug and I have noticed that. In all honesty, we could eat up all of that time. Uh, of Alyssa's, you know, 20 hours is. Is enough for now, but in reality, we could probably even give her more work that's on her plates. More initiatives that are, you know, going undone. More work that we're just not being able to follow through with at this point in time, so. Does anybody have any questions on those items, then?
Anybody? Alder Moore?
Just want to make a comment, uh, which is one of the items that's not in this budget. That's been removed from this budget that, that, uh, my colleagues might remember is that we used to. Have a contract with Renew Wisconsin. To promote solar energy. And, uh, we're no longer pursuing that contract because fortunately Renew Wisconsin. Recognized that, um, they can provide this service without, uh, that charge, recognize, and they're obviously recognizing Covid. And that everybody's budgets are tight, and it's really. A joint thing that they do with all the other surrounding communities, they do it for Middleton, they do it for Madison. I think they also do it for Pittsburgh now as well. So, Manona residents can still, um, take advantage of the Renew, Renona program, but, but we don't get charged a, a flat rate by. By Renew Wisconsin, uh, to exercise that, and I would just want to echo. What Brad said about, um, Alyssa, she's amazing. Has been amazing, and, um, and I know she's also looking for extra work. She's operating way below her pay grade here, so if anybody, uh, knows of other. Uh, other ways in which, uh, we could use her talents, or outside of the city could use her talents, I'm sure she'd appreciate it. But she's been, she's been really terrific, so I'm glad that we're. Not only hanging on to her, but that we're, um, you know, um, doing our best to take care of her.
Thank you, anybody else?
Mayor O'Connor, I had one item to add, it didn't get in the budget because there's no cost associated with it, but. One of the projects or initiatives that we are pushing for 2021 as well, uh, is a Manona Sustainable Business Initiative. The only reason it didn't get in the budget is because we figured that we would be able to. Get most of that work done with just staff time.
You've been working on that for quite a while, haven't you?
Yeah, so we're just kind of getting off the ground now, we got a survey complete, uh, we've talked with, uh, Devin Renner. From, um, Manona, or, uh, the Mezba. He gave, gave us a lot of good advice, we worked with Christie in the past on this, or it was mentioned to her, and she gave us a lot of good advice as well. So, uh, Alder, go forth, I'm sorry. And, uh, so we're trying to get that off the ground, I just wanted to make sure I mentioned it, so nobody's blindsided by that, uh, program for next year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything else for Brad? Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Well, we will. Uh, next up is planning, Doug Plowman, page 92.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, good evening, everybody. Too much to, to run through here, this, um, this is the same budget proposal as, as last year. The funding is to, the proposal is to, to stay the same. As, as Brad mentioned, uh, the part-time wages, um, have been taken elsewhere for Alyssa's hours because of the, um, the joint responsibilities that, that are there. Everything else, um, the minor adjustments, I think, were, were just the actual numbers, um, sort of as you'll see them in the spreadsheet. In terms of the, the things at, at the bottom, the professional development, the supplies numbers, things like that. They were all things, um, the exact numbers carrying forward from when Sonia was here. Quite honestly, uh, I'm looking for sort of a, a more normalized year to be able to understand exactly how, how those things play out, what, what exactly they look like. So that was really the proposal, to keep them as, as is right now, um, and, and sort of see where they, they shake out over time. What the needs are, if, if there's increase or decrease that can be made there. So, so that sort of covers the numbers, the, um, the long-term and short-term goals. I included five of them in the, um, the justification. The first couple, uh, were, were still sort of existing, and things that, that are still ongoing. And then the three, four, and five were really, um. Introductions for this year, for 2020, moving into 2021, um, new, new tasks, uh, to take on. I'd be happy to answer any questions on, on either budget or the work.
Anyone have any questions for Doug? I don't think so, thank you very much, Doug.
Thanks very much.
Uh, next is Joan, uh, talking about the clerk's office and the election funding.
Hi, everyone.
Before Joan gets there, just one quick thing, we did make. Basically, like, to change a thing to the budget, because everybody's 0% budgets came in where they were supposed to. Joan, it's to hers, we did make a change to her election budget, so, just so you're aware of that, it was a 5,000 change to her salaries.
Hey, Joan?
I'm writing notes, okay, there we go.
Page 32.
Just wanted to quickly give you, um, an update, because I'm sure you probably want to know how we're going with the, um. Imperson absentee voting and how the absentee voting's going, so very briefly update you that. We issued, uh, we have issued so far 400, 4,455 absentees, that's walk-ins and mailouts. Only 499 are not returned, hopefully those will start coming in. With the 3956 returned, we're at a 61% turnout already, just with absentee voters, just wanted you to know that. So far, 800. just with absentee voters. Just wanted you to know that. So far, eight hundred and thirty-three have voted in person and seventeen hundred and eighteen have used the um Dropbox. So we're getting people in, getting them out quickly, doing our best to keep everyone safe and separated. So just wanted to update you quick on that. Um, for my pardon me?
Thank you. That's great to know.
Okay, yeah, we're doing good. Um, just to uh, my uh budget uh for the clerk's office really hasn't changed um from last year, obviously, and we do want to keep our professional development uh fund up where it is because we definitely want Aline, the deputy clerk, to attend the completion year of the Clerk's Institute um in Green Bay because that one will teach her the items that are not part of her job, but are peripherally part of her job, and she is um stat- statutorily re, you know, responsible for some of the those type of things. Um, but doesn't do the actual work. And Manona, that would be budget type of stuff. Um, it's a really good uh sort of final button on the um, on her training, and I think it's very important. So I'd like to keep that account up. I hope there wouldn't be any cuts in that. Uh, for me, it would be my uh would be the um Clerk's Conference to get training and that type of thing, but really want to keep Aline going. So not a lot of changes there in the clerk's office budget. Does anyone have questions at all? Okay, yeah, so so much of it is statutorily required. We can't cut it or do anything to it. So um, elections, again, it's service contracts are pretty much set. That's to uh maintain the uh voter equipment. Um, public notices, again, that's a, that fluctuates somewhat, but um, we do have to publish the full ballot in our uh April because it's our ballot. It's a municipal ballot. So their cost is pretty high for that. Uh, supplies, we kind of got a lot of stuff, um, you know, in preparation. Um, nothing we could do about it. We had to buy more envelopes. We had to uh, you know, again, we don't have a choice on the costs for elections. Um, salaries, we did increase already, and I'm fine with our our sale, our salaries for election workers. Um, again, I think they understand it's the best we can do. Um, so any questions at all?
Just one question, uh, just one uh thing update for Jones. We got, I believe, two grants for the this year's elections, one's from Mark Zuckerbock, is that right? And then one from the state, told about eleven thousand dollars we received for the elections.
Just been a big help.
Yeah, it doesn't cover it all, but it makes a big dent. So we're very happy.
Any questions for Joan? Yes, not. Thank you, Joan.
You bet. Thank you.
And next up is Mr. Stefani with Public Works Utilities, Buildings, and Solid Waste. And Dan, did send a uh kind of a, just a high budget highlight document, I think, a day or two ago, didn't you, Dan? Yesterday, maybe, to everyone?
Yes, I did. Yep. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Turned over to Dan from Buildings and go from there.
Yes. So what I typically do every year, uh, probably somewhat different uh than the other department heads. I have eleven budgets. So what I've done over the years is is put together what I call a budget highlight sheet, and I pretty much identify increases or decreases of five hundred dollars uh or more or less. If I identified every, every line item movement throughout all the budgets, we'd be here, I guess, for my my portion even longer, but just because I don't cover it in my highlight doesn't mean you can't ask questions. So please do ask questions. Um, if I don't cover something or if you have questions at a later date. Um, with that, I will get started. Uh, the general buildings and grounds, uh, the city hall budget. There were no major changes for that budget uh based on the zero percent um that we were looking for. Um, but are there any questions that you might have for this budget? Okay. All right, the next budget, I believe, would be the highway street administration budget in the uh, in the public works portion. Uh, we did cut the professional development by five hundred dollars, and that was to help meet the budget restrictions for the year. Are there any questions for that budget?
Uh, just as before you start, I mean, kind of going to if you go page seventy-five, it's just, so Dan has these budgets. Some might be up or down as far as the wages, but in total, if you see the recap, um, we're with zero percent. So especially if you look at the wages, why is one account higher this year? One one account in the forestry budget is higher the other year. Just so you know, in total, it's okay. I mean, it's just where we change the allocations. Um, there's been no change in paying more. Um, but if you look at the overall, on page seventy-five, it shows the total recap of his funds and summary of it. So if you're looking just
Okay. Um, moving on, Mark, are you, are you okay if I move on? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, so the next item, uh, the next budget would be the shop machineries and buildings budget. The garage material and supply, we increased by five hundred dollars, and that was based on need. Is there any questions for that, that budget? Okay. Moving on, the public works administration, which was formerly titled the engineering budget. For that budget, we decreased the professional development by five hundred dollars to help meet the budget restrictions for the year. Any questions on that budget?
Doug?
Yes, Doug?
Yeah, um, so the professional development that you reduced here and in the previous budget. What would that go towards? Um, and who would it go towards?
Okay, this current budget for the public works administration, Brad and I use that line item to attend various con- conferences throughout the year. The previous one in the highway, street administration, that would be for Jeff Johnson uh to attend professional development. And I was able to decrease uh the line item for Jeff, and he is still able to go to uh, the class that was canceled this year. We're hoping to get him there next year. Um, we should still have enough for for the, for that class for him. So we should be good for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy? You're on mute.
Are you carrying over money, Dan? Do we need to carry over money for this year or is it in next year's budget?
No, I don't plan on carrying over any operational um dollars. But uh, the the money that we do have for Jeff, we should be able to cover his classes, one class that we want to send him to.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, moving on, the street maintenance and construction budget, this is uh our main budget for the public works operations. We reduced the street outside services by fifteen thousand dollars. That's the big cut that we we made to public works. Uh, that is uh usually contract work uh for street maintenance, uh such as crack sealing, uh infrared heats, things like that. However, um, the capital budget, we did get our road maintenance money back uh for next year. We're back up to three hundred thousand dollars. So uh, if you recall me talking about uh micro-surfacing and and chip sealing as part of that capital budget, we also do crack sealing uh prior to the streets being done. So we still have a fair amount of crack ceiling that we're going to get done next year. Um, but this fifteen thousand dollar line item, um, we'll still be able to get some done, but not as much as far as the operational end. Um, so I'm hoping in twenty twenty-two, uh, this request will go back up to what it was if if we can get there. Um, the median in terrace maintenance decreases by one thousand five hundred dollars for next year. That money is basically uh dedicated to power washing the sails. Um, we didn't do the sales this year with that money because they're staying to the point where the power washing no longer gets them cleaned. So I'm thinking in probably another two or three years, we might add that to the capital budget if if council and public works committee wants to replace the sale fabric. Um, in two thousand and eleven, I think it cost around ten thousand dollars to do that. Um, it all depends on what color you want to see on those sales, but we're cutting that out for next year. Okay, uh, next item would be the fuels in additives. We decreased that by five thousand five hundred dollars. And that is strictly due to market pricing. Um, the fuel rates projected for next year are even lower uh than what they predicted for this year. Um, so I think we're going to finish this year with a balance on all of our fuel because the prices were cheaper than what they predicted. So we're carrying that over to next year as well. Snow and ice supplies, we decreased that by thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Right now, we left uh the the winter season with a full salt shed, which took away the need to uh purchase two hundred extra tons of salt. So we are able to reduce that for twenty twenty-one. But depending on what the winter's like, um, this is one that will fluctuate every year. So if we have a busy winter, we'll be cranking that back up again for the following year. We typically buy about four hundred and sixty tons a year. And we reduce that need this year by uh two hundred tons going into the winter. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind that next year at this time, that'll probably go up. Uh, the next item, the last item for this budget, uh, we increase the street sign and repair and replacement account by five hundred dollars. And that is to account for marking paint uh for the bike group, pavement marking, and then also for sign repair dedicated to the bike group. So that would be pretty much it for the street maintenance and construction budget. Is there any questions on this one?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Moving on to the next budget, we have the road-related facilities. Uh, the first item would be the street lighting utilities. We increased that by five thousand four hundred dollars. And that is strictly uh for, um, we average between five and ten lights a year where NGN actually has to replace the head of the light. And so rather than have them keep putting the old style light back on, we're we're gonna have them replace that head and arm with an LED. So we're not asking them to do any more work because they're already going to be there doing our our average. Um, it just makes good sense to put an LED uh light in place of that that old style light. So Nancy, I see you smiling. I know uh Brad has mentioned Brad is excuse me?
I was not only smiling, Dan, I was clapping.
Yeah. I know you have a great interest in uh tackling our overall street lighting program uh with LED lights, but slowly we'll we'll get there. Um, this is a baby step. So uh, the next item is traffic control maintenance. We increased that by ten thousand five hundred dollars. And that is the contracted maintenance that the city of Madison does for us as it relates to the traffic signals. Um, previous years, I don't know why we didn't use all the funding every year, but they have a new leader over there that's in charge of the the traffic signals, um, in charge of traffic altogether. And they've been pretty spot on with getting out there dedicated every month um with traffic signal maintenance. So we are seeing actual work being done. And I think this was actually cut last year, but we're we're raising that back up to meet the invoices that are currently coming in. So are there, yeah, we had uh twelve thousand in two thousand and nineteen as actual. We had twenty thousand budgeted, so I know we're looking at uh twenty-four thousand for the proposed budget. So um, we should have enough to cover the the cost for that next year. Are there any questions on that budget? Okay. The next budget uh would be the forestry budget. Not a lot of movement for this one. The only item that we have here is the brush collection uh services contract. Uh, keep in mind that this is half the increase. The other half is identified in the stormwater utility budget. We have an increase uh in the proposed contract price of two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, the same amount appears in the stormwater utility budget. We are currently in the last year of the Barnes contract. Um, for the November meetings, uh, you will see um, me bringing forward the proposal for another three-year contract with Barnes. And we already took that through public works committee, and we have the recommended approval, but I'll cover that um next week. So that would be it as far as movement in the forestry budget. Is there any, any questions on on that budget? Okay. Um, I believe the next one would be the solid waste disposal. Um, Mark, does that follow the book properly?
I think that's on page one fifty-four, maybe, starting there.
Well, just so you know, this is the only one, it was impossible to balance a zero budget. So this is the only one, all the budgets we did. So that's really good.
Yep. So this uh, this budget strictly covers our curbside residential solid waste and recycling collection program. And every increase you see here is contractual based. The expected rebate that I'm planning for, based on current market pricing, we expect to see an increase next year of around three thousand dollars. Um, it's been down um, starting last year because the secondary market has dried up. The recyclables are no longer being purchased at a higher rate from foreign countries. So um, we're seeing that trend with uh, with our sale here in Manona. Um, the curbside recycling collection increases by one thousand fifty-three dollars, and that's based on contract pricing. The curbside refuse collection increases by three thousand four hundred and ten dollars. The tipping fee, the disposal cost to get rid of the solid waste increases by seven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. And the recycling processing fee, in essence, the tipping fee, increases by one thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, so that's what we're looking at for the solid waste disposal fund for next year. And we do have um, the contract expires at the end of twenty twenty-three, so next year will be year five of the seven-year contract. So any questions for that?
Nancy?
Um, uh, Dan, I I know that uh, the Sustainability Committee um, did quite a bit of work around uh Earth Week, especially um, starting in Earth Week to, you know, update our Recypedia and to put a map on to uh encourage people to take recycling like e-tronics uh elsewhere and styrofoam, and we did PSAs and we updated um, uh, you know, the information for residents about what to put in their bin versus not putting in their bin, um, et cetera, all with an eye towards trying to keep the volume down, uh, because I know it would have gone through the roof. Um, that being said, I know there are a lot more people at home.
Yep.
Um, I'm just wondering uh if we've, if we've seen, uh, given that I know a year ago, we had a real issue with volume uh, uh, really pretty dramatically skyrocketing, um, what's happened with that in relation to the contract?
Um, oddly enough, and I I can email you all the current um tonnage, I I track uh I track all of that on a monthly basis. And usually, uh, in the past, I've always sent out the year-end summary. Um, I can forward where we're at to date. I can do that tomorrow, uh, send that to you all. But oddly enough, um, I think March, April, May, we actually seen our bulk, um, our bulk program tonnage go up. We've seen the solid waste tonnage go up, and we've also seen the recycling tonnage go up. And I think it was because people were at home, they were doing projects. Um, but since uh people have gone back to work somewhat, we've seen the tonnages come back down a little bit. Um, so I'll send that to you um tomorrow, and you can review that. And then I think when we do operating budget at at the next council meeting, if there's any questions or in between, feel free to let me know. But we're usually pretty static on our tonnages because we don't change a whole lot as far as our numbers go. We have two thousand seven hundred and eighteen stops. And uh, two years ago, we had two thousand seven hundred and sixteen, so we don't change much. And two years ago, we had two thousand seven hundred sixteen, so we don't change much. So we're, I guess that's nice as far as comparison goes because we can actually see the movement of our current residents of what they do. So, yep. Any other questions for that? Okay, the next one would be the stormwater utility budget. Okay, for that budget, the outside services, we decreased that by five hundred fifty dollars and that was based on need. We decreased the postage by two thousand. I think this one came from Mark. I'm not sure if if we reallocated that somewhere else, that that cost. The equipment maintenance and repair account decreases by one thousand dollars and that was based on need. Our vehicle maintenance and repair decreases by seven hundred dollars and that was based on need. Our in our two sixteen expenses, we also decreased that by eight hundred dollars based on need. So all of those line items was not because of the request of the mayor, it was just based on need. We we didn't have to spend that money, so we cut the budget. The last item here, brush collection, we did increase that by two thousand three twenty-five. This is the other half of what we covered in forestry and that was to meet contract pricing. So that would be it for the stormwater utility. Any questions for that that budget? Okay. I believe the next one would be water utility. Okay, starting off for water utility, we increased the maintenance of pumping plant by two thousand one hundred dollars. And that's basically to to account for, properly account for equipment maintenance that that we perform. I think that account was a little underfunded in the past, so we're requesting that be bumped up a little bit. The reservoir and tower materials and repair, we increased that by eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars. And that would be a one-time increase for next year only. We are looking to do another round of epoxy painting on the floors at all three wells. And I think it's been probably decades since that has been last done. And what the epoxy painting does is it puts another pretty tough coating to prevent the corrosion from the chemicals that are in the in the well houses. So we're looking to get that done next year. The meter outside services account, we decreased that by two thousand dollars. And that was based on need. The meter annual software and fees, we increased that by two thousand five hundred dollars. And that is for, we signed up for an annual technical support contract with Midwest Meter. We plan to do that for a few years and reevaluate that, but that's to help us get through the meter transition that city council approved last year to begin this year. We're actually going to start doing the meter replacements, I believe, in January. And HydroCorp, who we've contracted with, will be ramping up the education part of that program very soon. Sending out letters, we'll send out letters, we'll have website notices and things like that. And then I know there's going to be questions, but we do have an opt-out program as part of that. And that was also approved by the PSC when we got their permission to do the meter changeout. So anyway, that that program's going to start rolling out here pretty soon. The hydrants, materials and repair account, we decreased that, decreased that by nine hundred dollars and that was based on need. And then the last item for water, the fuels and additives decreases by three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars. And that was based on market pricing. So, so any questions for the water utility?
Alder Coor.
This is a question is more for Mark. The epoxy painting of the floor, is that because it's maintenance that that wouldn't be in capital? I I'm always confused as to what goes in capital versus what goes in.
That was considered a maintenance project. That's why it's not in capital.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for water? Okay, the last budget for the department would be the sewer utility.
Page one seventy-four.
Okay, Mark covered this in his introduction. The first one that we have is the big one, the MMSD increase that we're expecting. Seventy-four thousand four hundred fifty dollars in addition to the twenty twenty-one budget for this this service.
Dan, can I say something for this? This is my little
Yep.
peep on this one. Just so you know, this is controlled by Madison Metro Sewer District. It's increased five hundred thousand, we're five hundred thousand since two hundred, since two thousand eleven, ten years, we went from five hundred thousand to over a million dollars. On this one, we have very little control of it. Keep on asking why it's increasing. We see less than ninety-nine, a lot of new meters they're putting in. So it is, you know, we look at the rates, we have really no control over this one. And it's increasing our sewer rates pretty, I mean, a lot, last year was about fifteen percent. Our increase was, and this year's, hopefully it's up to seven percent. Could be even higher once we get the notice from the Sewer District.
The majority of of their increases that we see are due to their capital projects. I believe they stuck in the in the last ten years, probably well over three hundred million dollars in their treatment plant. And they pass that on to all the cities that discharge waste to them. So they 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 pass it on to us in the form of treatment charges for nitrogen, phosphorus, suspended solids, things like that in the flow charges. So so when when we get that, it shows up in the volume charges, but they've had significant capital projects at the treatment plant in the past decade. So I think it was in two thousand eleven when I first got here, we had a five hundred forty-two thousand or five hundred forty-eight thousand dollar budget, but we have a portion of our charges, our INI. And we have MSA signed up the past few years to help us locate that and make a plan for correcting the deficiencies in the system and we're going to keep that ongoing. But the great majority of those increases that we've seen is related to the capital projects that MMSD has done. So and I don't know what else they have in their pipeline as far as continuing continuing with high-cost capital projects, but that's at least where we've been this year and and the previous years. Moving on to fuels and additives.
Dan, one second, real quick. Just for everyone's benefit, can you just explain real briefly what INI is for the benefit of the council members?
Yep. INI is an abbreviation for infiltration and inflow, and that is due to groundwater, clean water, clear water finding its way into the sanitary sewer system through cracks in pipes, cracks in sewer laterals, cracks in in manholes. And also, I believe, in which we're about to find out when HydroCorp begins their work, is some pump discharges. I think we have a lot of illegal connections to the sanitary sewer system via some pump discharge. And that violates not only our city ordinance, but the MMSD ordinance and DNR code as well. So when HydroCorp begins the meter replacement, we have them signed up to do cross-connections inspections. And they'll find those when they do the inspections. But we're we're doing what we can on on our side as far as evaluating the system with MSA. And then we're going to be tackling the the private side with the some pump discharges very soon. But the whole idea there is is you don't want to treat clean water or clear water because it's you you waste money on chemicals, you waste money on power. It's wear and tear on the sanitary sewer list station. So it's it has a ripple effect of of why you you don't want INI in your system. So and we're paying for that, but we're we're working on trying to find the sources. Is there any other questions that we have for INI? Kathy? Kathy, you're unmuted.
I know we have to do something about the sump pumps, but for people who have sump pumps and have water going into their basement or whatever, do they have an option, I mean, do they have an option other than the sump pumps that's affordable?
Well, the the city code says to discharge that on your property. You know, if there's if there's a storm main that runs in front of your home on your side of the street, they have an option that we can, it'd be at their cost, but they can pay for a direct connection to the storm main. Time of reconstruction would be the time to look at putting laterals to the property line if somebody wants to connect to the storm main that way. You usually see that in in new developments when they put in new subdivisions. But I don't think Manona has done storm laterals on any of the projects, but it's something to consider in the future.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that for these people, and there's been more and more of it, as I understand it, with the increasing range brains, that we need to find a way to work with them because I think some of them feel fairly helpless in terms of what do they do about it?
Absolutely, especially on the north end of the city where we have all the springs, you know, that that help contribute to the high groundwater levels. So but that would be, that would be the main fix is to have storm laterals put in, but it's going to be an expensive cost as far as getting our portion ready to receive that water. But then there's a significant homeowner portion, probably around between two and five thousand dollars just for them to run a pipe and connect. So.
I'm sorry. Can't you also just run a hose from your, I mean, that's what we do, our sump pump discharges out into our yard? If you have a long hose to
Right. And that's what the ordinance says to do, is to discharge on your property. I know some folks, when we're not in the freezing timeframe, they'll they'll take that right up to the curb and let it drip over the curb, which is just fine. But we don't want that in winter because that creates ice on the roads and that allows water to get under the the asphalt. And that will lead to to buckling of pavement and pothole. And so right. Any other questions for that one? Okay, moving on, the fuels and additives, we decreased that by one thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and that's due to market pricing. Listation materials and repair, we decreased that by five hundred dollars. That was based on need. And the safety program material and supply, we decreased that by five hundred dollars and that was to help meet the budget restriction. So that's what we have for the sewer budget in all the budgets. So if there's any questions or if you have any questions after tonight, please let me know.
Alder Groupie and then Alder Moore.
I just have a comment that I really appreciate the layout that you've used, Director Stefani, with just showing increases, decreases. To me, it's a very helpful rubric to understand the rest of the budget document. So thank you for your time on that.
Thank you.
Alder Moore?
I would certainly echo that. Dan, and and my question is, at the last budget meeting, we talked about the possibility of using the house that we purchased for some sort of an office. And at that time, you indicated that you had shut things down. And so it wasn't in the budget. So related to that, knowing that the staff is doing some investigating about that as an option. I'm wondering, A, if if it was in the budget, would we see it in the the city hall? Budget sunset's that's closest to city hall? Or does it get it, or do you get to do twelve budgets a year?
I believe that to keep things efficient, we would probably just create a new line item in the general buildings in in grounds account.
Okay. And then second, I'm assuming that nothing's changed since we haven't made any decisions there. And so that if i- if something was brought forward by the staff at some point, that we would just take that up as a separate line item and, you know, at that time. And that potentially, if it was a one-time expense where we were building out some office space or something like that, that it that it could come out of the fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, that that would likely be my my recommendation if we get to that point, just because you know, the expense would be short-term in nature to convert, you know, some space in the house into office. It would not be something that I'd recommend that we borrow for, and then, you know, as part of our larger capital borrow and pay interest on, it'd be something that I'd recommend we take out of fund balance if we get to that point.
Although, wouldn't we be paying ongoing then heating and water and that kind of cost?
Those would be ongoing operating budget maintenance costs that we'd have to account for.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we are way ahead of schedule here, which is good. Final is Brian, CDA Legislative, et cetera.
Thanks. I think we'll start with the legislative first, so that's twenty-one. Again, keeping with the theme of tonight, it's a zero percent increase for all three of the different line items here, legislative, judicial and legal. No major tweaks here. Again, if there's areas where we had costs come in lower for this year, we adjusted twenty twenty-one to match that. But all those three line items come at zero percent increases there. Any questions on that one? Okay, if none, then next we move to executive office, twenty-five. Again, same thing here, zero percent increase. I I did make a couple of minor decreases in the administrative vehicle usage, just we've been using it less because of COVID. So it has less wear and tear and less gas cost. And I made some reductions in the executive office other, which pays for a number of different things just to kind of help us kind of generally speaking with the budget this year. But again, comes in at actually a negative two percent for that one. Any questions there? Okay, if none, I think next is general government personnel, page thirty-seven. The main change here is, again, because of wanting to be mindful of the budget and kind of stay under a threshold here and find some savings where we could, we made the decision, and I would say it was a a difficult decision that we talked a lot about, to at least for this year, remove the employee award program. That was a twenty thousand dollar program that we had for small merit-based awards that we would provide to staff members that department heads had felt had kind of gone above and beyond the call of of duty in any given year. You know, it's it's a good program, but I think there is maybe some things we could do differently and better toward our employees. And I don't know that this program in and of itself is the way to do that. So given kind of the the budget pressures, this was one item we flagged to remove from the budget and we'll we'll look at other options for future budgets going forward. Any questions about the personal one?
Alder Coor.
Could you tell me how much that was that we pulled out? Thank you.
Then next is assessment, and that's page forty-three. Again, that's a zero percent, that's based upon our contract that we have with Accurate Appraisal. We're in the second year of a four-year contract with them, so that number doesn't change. That number will be the same throughout the the term of our contract with them there. Insurance, which is page forty-six. This one obviously just reflects the the increase that we're expecting with our insurance firms. I don't know if Mark or Leah, if you had anything else to share on this one?
Yeah, I'll maybe share. So this one did increase a lot. We did have we have, we used to have a very low modifier. We had two fairly large claims in the last year. It's a three-year row in average. We had somebody as a volunteer was hurt and they had to pay him as Bill was a full-time worker for the city. And that, that was one of the big cases. So so our workers' comp did increase. It's probably going to be up there for a couple of years until that rolling average decreases. And this is a number that comes straight from SIVM.
Any other questions about insurance? Okay, then the one, the last one I've got tonight is CDA, that's page ninety-five. Again, wanting to be mindful of the budget. We did reduce our CDA support staff a little bit from twenty twenty. That's in part because we had leaned on our support staff member Gary Becker for some of the TIF district modifications that we just went through over the last couple of months. Since that work is substantially completed, we likely won't need to Uh, since that work is substantially completed, uh, we likely won't need to rely on our consultant that much, uh, going into twenty-one. So I was able to reduce that, uh, that's kind of the major, major change there.
Questions? Is that everything, Brian, or did you have?
Nope, that's, that's it for me.
Anybody have any other questions for Brian? Okay, well, I guess that completes what we're going to talk about tonight.
Uh, sorry, Mayor, it looks like Alder Core has a question or comment.
Jennifer, did you have a question?
Yeah, could we just jump back to the executive budget for a second? I had a question about the marketing fund, the three thousand dollars, what's that used for?
Uh, it depends, I mean, since I've been here, uh, last year, for the first time, we put an ad in, um, Madison Regional Economic Development Magazine that is produced in part with MadRep, which is Madison Regional Economic Development Partnership, and livability.com, um, so they had, uh, they put out this magazine every year. Uh, last year was the first year that we put in an ad for the city of Manona. Um, so it's typically that type of stuff, uh, I don't know that we used it, uh, when I was here the year prior. So it's for that type of advertising stuff about the community. So, um, I leave that kind of open in case there's something that comes up in the middle of the year that we need to, to use for advertising. But that's what we used it for last year, or, or this year, I should say.
Jen?
Did we see a benefit for that ad?
Tough to say, I mean, uh, we purchased the ad and the ad was printed pre-COVID, um, so I, I don't know. And that's one of the questions I'll have for MadRep, uh, when they meet to talk about whether or not to do it for twenty twenty-one, is what they saw. It, it was an ad, uh, that was, could be seen both in print form, but also they had, uh, digital media for it as well. So I would be curious as to what type of, um, viewership they got. And, um, depending on that, it's going to dictate whether or not we pursue it again for twenty-one. So, tough to say, this was a weird year to do it.
Yeah. Kristy?
Um, yeah, I'll just comment, I, I do know that magazine well. And I know we, for many years, we were the only community in the nine, uh, almost a nine-county region that didn't advertise in it. So it was kind of, um, just seemed to make sense to be there. It's, you know, site selection and economic development driving business our way.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was a small ad, I think it was like a quarter-page ad, but it was enough to give people, um, some of the highlights of the community and then provide them links to our, you know, website and other things, so they could, you know, do a deeper dive of the community if they wanted to. But I think, uh, having us in that book puts us on the table with some of the other players, um, that are a little bit more aggressive in their marketing, in part because they have some more greenfields that they can, um, advertise for that we don't necessarily have, so.
Alder Core.
Shouldn't that go in CDA's budget then?
CDA's budget was a thousand, so it wasn't going to cover the ad, uh, cost, because it was, I think it was close to three thousand, so I, I took it out of the city marketing here.
Do you mean, do you think we should move the number into the CDA budget?
Well, it seems more appropriate.
I mean, if we get to that point, I can offer a budget amendment, um, to, to make that transfer. I want to see what the cost of the, the ad in twenty-one is going to be before we decide to do it or not yet.
It's possible, we may use that budget for other things, isn't it, Brian, as well, depending on.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, I mean, that's right. Depending on what other marketing, yeah, um, I mean, if the council wants you, you could move over, you know, a thousand and put two thousand in executive and two thousand in the CDA marketing, and then we'd have two pools of money, uh, there, I'd, I'd be fine with that.
Any other questions?
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Sure.
It's only one faster than I thought it would, because Dan's usually takes a lot longer, so, um, Dan, you did a good job with this. She hands out, that saves a lot of time, um, so I appreciate that, Dan. Um, the biggest things, you know, the next meeting will be the first read of the operating budget, uh, which is November, next, next Monday. So if you want a budget amendment for that, I know the packet probably goes out Thursday, um, or Friday morning, I know Leah likes to try Thursday. But if you have a budget amendment that comes in over the weekend, are you thinking about it? Um, I know we're doing it here close up to the first, um, we will still send like a, a copy out on Monday. So if you, um, we'll get them in, we'll send them out, so you have a list of any new amendments that when it came out, if they're not in the packet. So, just in case, if, if you're thinking you want to make one and don't have enough time to get it for the packet. We definitely will send revised ones out on Monday if we have to.
Kathy? You're muted.
Brian, I just had a question about that three thousand dollar fund. If we move it to the CDA, could it come out a tip instead of out of the bud, the, um, property tax levy?
Uh, possibly, I, I want to look into that and just make sure that's an eligible expense for us. I'll, I'll research that and let the council know.
Kristy?
Let's see, another option, not that the room tax is going to be flush, but, um, as executive tourism, it could fall under room tax as a marketing expense possibly.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with that, Kristy. I didn't want to take it out of there because I know they're struggling and I want, if it can go to the chamber.
I don't think.
I always like to use where we can, if it's possible.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check to see if it could be an eligible expense. We have to figure that out.
Anyone else? Okay, and obviously you can also submit, um, budget amendments for the following meeting as well, on the sixteenth, when we'll actually be voting and, um, on the amendments as well, so totally up to you. Tomorrow night, we will meet at the same time, um, and cover the rest of the items on the budget. So, does anybody else, Kathy?
I just wanted to say that if lunch was delivered to the council members, as in the past, they missed my house.
We're trying to save money.
I don't eat much.
Nancy?
Um, I, I just wanted to say, I, I can only imagine from a staff standpoint, how difficult this budget was. Um, and, uh, not to mention, uh, uh, the mayor. I know it's really, really hard, and I just wanted to say I really, really appreciate all of the staff, um, work, um, and understanding that we're in the crappy position we're in. Very much appreciated.
Yep, I appreciate that too. And, you know, my goal was, I really hope we wouldn't have to lay anybody off. And I, you know, I completely understand that people would like pay raises, but I think most people are pretty understanding that they'd rather have a job if they could. And hopefully next year we can make up for some of that. But, anybody else? Okay, well, is there a motion to adjourn until tomorrow?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you.
Have a good night, all.